Thank you, Mike. All of the Board of Selectmen are present. And I will open the floor to comments from the public.
Bill, Paul Varga.
Hey, Paul, I knew you'd come.
You didn't think you're gonna get away twice, did you? Um, I wanna speak as a member of the public to item six, which is the Agricultural Commission request for the exemption change. Um, I couldn't make the last Board of Selectmen meeting because I had another commitment, so.
Well, not to interrupt you now that I prompted you on, but I'd be glad to recognize you when we get to that item on the agenda.
Okay, that's fine, that works. Then I'll talk then, thank you.
Okay. Any other members of the public that have any comments other than an item that's on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, uh, for Selectmen's briefing. I will be brief. We received the, uh, from CES, the existing conditions narrative on town buildings. Uh, some redated January thirty first, uh, we are reviewing that. I believe Catherine and Roger, you were sent copies of the report.
Roger, did you get one?
Uh, I'm looking through it right now.
It would have been an email.
Oh, oh, whoa, whoa, whoa.
I didn't, I don't think I saw it.
Yeah, I'll, I, I'll take a look.
Okay, Chris thought she had sent it out, but if it didn't, we'll get it right out to you in the morning.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, Capital Improvement Committee has had two. Somebody say something? Okay, Capital Improvements Committee has had two meetings so far. We've met the last two Wednesday evenings, we have another one coming up this Wednesday. And, uh, they're proceeding to do research and review the proposals made regarding the, uh, capital projects that different departments and that are asking for. And they're preparing, of course, their recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. Budgets have been received from all departments. And our finance unit is putting together our budget packages. Public Works is to be congratulated on the job that they did during, uh, our Blizzard Bobby uh, on the twenty ninth. Uh, and also the following, uh, ice storm. We had no incidences, all equipment held up. We had one minor incident with a flat tire. And I, our guys again are to be commended to a job well done. I think I got two complaints, uh, we had, uh, a, um, small dirt road that we forgot to do. And somebody else's was not happy with the quality of plowing. And I think out of forty-two hundred and fifty-five residents, that's a pretty good batting record. Um, the dispersment of the COVID tests and the masks continue, uh, we have them available here at Town Hall, we asked if you're interested in a, uh, a test that you contact our office, that's the Selectmen's Office. Uh, we do have some available and have been dispersing them. Mostly the units that we've been doing, which is, was our original process that we went through, were for those that were most in jeopardy, being the elderly, those who were immune compromised, uh, had been experiencing symptoms, uh, or been exposed, and we continue to do that, although we do make exceptions in particular cases, we do it on a case by case basis. And if you know of anybody, I would recommend that you have them give us a call, the test will do you more good than it doing us here at the office.
How many, uh, I'm sorry, Bill, how many masks, how many tests do we still have?
We probably have, uh, in excess of about two hundred tests left. We got, we got refurbished with somebody, with some of them from the state under their new regulations, which were our old regulations, so, uh, we're in the process of doing that. Our masks are available, um, you don't even have to come into the building, we put them out on a daily basis uh, on a desk out in front. Uh, we invite each resident to take a box of the N ninety-fives for each occupant of their household. And those have also been moving very well. Um, that's all I have right now, I'd be glad to answer any questions that any of you might have down the line for agenda items or anything regarding what I just mentioned. The next item will be acceptance of the minutes of January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, do I have a motion?
I'll move to accept the meeting minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Are there any comments or corrections? Hearing none.
I only, oh, bear with me, the only thing I had, um, was that it said, members of the Board of Selectmen are being updated on additional survey results at each Board of Selectmen meeting. So, is that what we're doing? Because I, I don't think that we've heard that. That there are different result, other results coming in, or?
Well, we probably haven't got any, and for our last couple of meetings, I know that we had an inquiry from Joan and we added the Trumpco property to our list. And I know we had discussed that at our last meeting briefly.
So no, no other ones have come in through the email process that we have?
No, there is one that I asked Chris to add to the list today, which was the CES report. But I believe she already had it on there.
Yes.
And the, and the cost, I think, was eleven-five or something to that. Um, so we've had, we haven't had, as long as we're talking about that, my, my intention is at our next Selectmen's meeting to discuss setting a date for a public hearing. And then I'm gonna make recommendations, uh, I'd like that public hearing to be followed by a town meeting and look for approval for the items that we wanna go forward with, uh, at that time. Uh, that's part of all, though, it's not necessarily their purview. But I thought it goes hand in hand as part of what our Capital Improvements Committee is also looking at and making suggestions on.
I think it's only fair that the public be provided with the information as to the surveys that were filled out. And, you know, counts and, and what those topics were uh, from the public before they make decisions about certain ones.
I agree, and, and when we notice the public hearing in the town meeting on that, we'll certainly make that available, if not sooner. Any other comments or corrections? Hearing none, my call for a vote, all in favor of approving the minutes is submitted, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? Thank you. Hear from boards and committees and departments. Uh, the next item, uh, emphasized here is the Agricultural Commission, but I'll wanna wait to see, are there any other boards or committees that have any comments or, uh, anything they'd like to bring before the board? Hearing none, without objection, I'll go to, uh, the next item, Agricultural Commission. Continue discussion regarding the commission recommendation to increase, uh, personal property tax farm machinery from one hundred thousand to two hundred thousand. And the recommendation to expand the eligibility perimeters of the dairy farm orchard tax abatement ordinance to include vegetable farms, non-traditional farms, and nurseries. And I will open the floor to comments. The only thing I'd ask you to do is identify yourself. And, uh, I'd, I'd ask you initially to keep your comments not to exceed three minutes, and since I postponed Paul's last effort, I'm gonna give the floor to Paul Varga for his comments.
Thank you, Bill. Um, well, there were a lot of questions at the last meeting, I wasn't able to attend, as I said, because I probably could have helped answer a couple. Um, the first question was about, uh, the, um, the exemption for farm machinery from one hundred thousand to two hundred thousand. Um, I'm the one who can raise their hand and say that I'm the one and only farm right now that exceeds the hundred thousand dollars, so the change would currently only affect me, as far as I'm aware. Um, I spoke with Kara today and she seems to think that that's also the case. Um, so, uh, right now, the impact is to me. Um, it, I can't speak to what it would be, I'd have to run the numbers, um, but the bottom line is the exemption allows me to purchase equipment and keep my farm running. Um, and not have to continue to pay property tax on something that I, I have to use every day or almost every day. Um, the second part of that is, when it comes to the property tax exemption, um, there's several, I guess, pieces to this puzzle. Um, currently, uh, there's regulations or, or I guess part of the regulation in place is it limits who can apply for the exemption for, um, the building exemption, um, up to the hundred thousand dollars, and then the, uh, that what the Ad Commission is, is trying to do or wants to bring to the table is that additional types of farms, the, the vegetable farms, non-traditional farms and nurseries. Um, to put it in perspective, I own just over or just under a hundred and ten acres. Um, uh, the PA four ninety act that the state of Connecticut has and Ashford recognizes allows me to uh, take, uh, if you take a hundred and ten and take out the two acres my houses sit, sits on by, by zoning regs, I have ninety-eight, just under ninety-eight acres in PA four ninety, which reduces the assessment value um, already. So, if you reduce the tax on that property by fifty percent, the impact is it's not super small, but it's not as big as people would think, and also, um, in that regulation, there's some things that require, like, the, the farm is not allowed to take the building exemption and the fifty percent exemption. So, um, it's a pretty complex regulation when it comes to how the assessor has to deal with it, but from a town standpoint, um, it's kind of important to the farmers. Um, quite honestly, if that PA four ninety didn't exist, I wouldn't own a hundred and ten acres because I couldn't afford the property tax on it. And neither can a lot of other people that, that, um, that own of, of the, a large piece of space. Um, and then only other thing I want to address real quick is, uh, I know the discussion had to do with what, uh, Mr. Brock wants to do. And farming is an industry or a commercial, however you wanna look at it, my great-grandparents started as chicken farmers, if I built the new chicken coop, it certainly wouldn't look like the ones my great-grandparents built. And I'm sure people wouldn't be happy about it, but it's still agriculture, it just would look a lot different. I know in Ashford, especially in the Northeast, we tend to think of agriculture as a bunch of open space with a couple of rocks and a hay field. But that's because we, we've lost all our dairy farms and our chicken farms and all the other things. And the reason we've lost them is because land has become so valuable that it's more valuable to me to sell it and build a house or let somebody else build a house than it is to hold on to it. And I don't think, I know that's not what I want, that's why I bought my grandparents' place. And with that, I'll leave because I'm almost on four minutes, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Any other comments?
Art Talmadge, I'm chairman of the, uh, the Agriculture Commission.
Evening, Art, thank you, go ahead.
I, uh, I just wanna echo some of the stuff that Paul said, if we just look carefully at Paul, he's got a hundred and something acres. Um, how many other large farms are there here in town that would benefit, uh, from every, every tool that the town could put in its toolkit to help maintain and promote agriculture? Um, if some of our larger farms decided that they could no longer affor- afford to farm anymore, like Paul just said, uh, if you had the Molnar's, Danny's I check, and Burl, the Whitechuck Farm, um, any one of them decided to subdivide, that would be a huge, huge impact to the town, negative. Um, so anything the town can do to help promote and sustain agriculture, put that tool in their toolkit is, uh, is, is a benefit to all the residents of the town.
Thanks.
And I'd be happy as chairman to answer any questions regarding the, um, the proposals we have.
Does anyone have any qu- any other comments or any questions for Art?
Yes, I do, um, this is Steve Mariko.
Evening, Steve.
Um, Paul alluded to, uh, what Luther wants to do. Um, you know, I've, I've watched, um, the, the recent Ad Commission meetings, I've watched, uh, uh, Board of Selectmen meetings, and it seems like, um, what Luther wants to do has not been mentioned as just part of discussion in the Agriculture uh, Commission. I think that's germane to tax abatements here. Um, it, it's important to know who would benefit from these tax abatements. Um, in, in terms of, uh, the farm building eligibility, there are only three farms that currently benefit from that, that's the Merciers, the Heffleys, and the Molnar's, um, two of those are horse farms. Um, I think that it's important that we understand who would benefit from, from these additional abatements. I would also encourage the Agricultural Commission to look at how they might help, uh, at least discuss how they might help some of the other people um, in perhaps some novel way, um, uh, obtain tax abatements, maybe, maybe they don't even try for tax abatements now, I, I don't know, but, but the point is, they really haven't discussed all the details financially, um, how much it would cost the town, anything like that. Um, and I think that warrants, uh, some further study and discussion, open discussion for the, um, for the residents of the town. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Can I reply, please?
Yes.
Art Talmadge.
Um, well, Art, can I, can I have a second, Art?
Sure, go ahead, Luther.
Um, hi, this is Luther Brown. I am a member of the Ad Commission, but I'm speaking, uh, as an individual, uh, at the moment. I would respectfully request that, you know, the topic that is on the agenda this evening is to address the proposed tax abatement changes that the Ad Commission put forward. We, we do have a project for our farm that we are pursuing, however, that's not on the agenda for tonight, and I don't believe it's appropriate to be trying to either portray our project in one light or another, uh, by means of including it in this agenda item, I think that a private project is just that, and I don't, I don't see how it's appropriate to try to either, although I appreciate Paul's support, I don't know if it's appropriate to be either supporting or undermining, uh, a project in the context of considering this, uh, proposal, thanks.
Art, you had comment?
Yes, thank you. The real- reality is, is there is no project. This has just been a conversation amongst neighbors. There's nothing before the Planning and Zoning Commission, there's no paperwork filed at the town clerks or the Land Use Office. There is no project, right? It's been a simple, private conversation among neighbors. And, and it really has nothing to do with what we're talking about here, and I really hope we can limit and stop the comments about some project that is just a dream in someone's head right now.
Uh, this is, if I may, Bill?
Catherine.
Um, I have to say, I, I do agree with Luther and with Art on that. Um, this is about an abatement that, and it's also talking about who it would be for and what the, and I guess my only question is about the non-traditional farms. But, um, the other part of this is, Art, when you were speaking, you said this would benefit all residents in town. I don't think I see it that way, I'm trying to understand what you mean by that.
In almost every survey that was done, uh, when we were working with the Advocate Program, the number one or number two thing that people wanted to preserve in town was agriculture. And if, if someone like Paul Varga mentioned that if he gets too expensive, um, I know I think about it all the time, if, if things go wrong just too far, I have a letter sitting on top of my desk from a real estate developer who would, who would give me enough money to retire. And I don't want to, um, so that, so by saying it would benefit everyone in the town, um, maintaining our farms and our open space, farms, forests, open space are all agriculture. Um, by giving every farmer the tools they need to maintain their hundred, two hundred, five hundred acres, uh, of highly developable land, um, benefits everyone, uh, costs of, uh, community services. You put a hundred houses on Charlie Whitechuck's farm up there, I don't know who owns it now, a family member, but put a hundred or two hundred houses on that several hundred acres up there, what's that gonna cost the town? And if that guy, if the person who owns it now wants to invest two hundred thousand dollars, a tractor alone will cost you a hundred, setup of hay equipment will cost you another hundred thousand. If they had the tax abatements in their pocket, they would invest the money in farming the land, which is what they really would prefer to do versus subdividing, which, you know, land-rich, cash-poor, um, it still rings true today.
Okay, thank you.
Loretta Roble, um, uh, the Chair of the Ashford, Chair of the Conservation Commission. Um, one of the questions that I think as a commission that we have is when you say something like non-traditional farming, what does that really mean and what is the impact? And for, for us as a commission, our concern is that whenever we look at any change in regulation zoning or whatever, that we look at the total impact on that and make sure that we are really taking the whole interest of the town into account, including the land, including the resources, including the water, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think our concern as a commission is to make sure that we look at all these things, and I'm aware that agriculture is changing, and even within the last twenty years, things have been very different. I'm also aware, since we've been involved with the cons- with the Ashford Farmers Market for fifteen years already, of how difficult it is for small farmers to make a living. And what happened this year, that they really survived a couple of years ago because of COVID, nobody wanted to go inside. So everybody came to the Farmers Market, this year it was different, people felt safer, so they went to the big box stores. And that really put a dent into our smaller farmers. And it really created a lot of problems, so for me, it's like, or for us as a commission, really, and I'm speaking as the Chair of the Commission, our concern is always looking at the town as a whole and what does the town really want? And we have said, I think, several times that we've been very much in favor of agriculture, and what does that mean and what does it look like? And is agriculture moving more and more towards an industry? And how does that work? And, and how do we as a town look at that issue and deal with it in a very responsible manner, paying attention to, we want the farms that we have now, we wanna keep them. We don't want the farmers to sell their land or have to struggle to survive, which is the reality now. So how do we, as a town, create regs and, um, uh, parameters that support our farmers? I think that, that's really important, and I, and I would think that most everybody in town would agree with that kind of concept. So that is my concern, that to make sure, uh, that are any regulations, any changes that we make do not have a negative impact on all of our wonderful, beautiful resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine, I think, I think you had something else, or?
Um, yes, I think we have, there's two parts to this, if I understand, and maybe I'm not uh, separated, uh, maybe they need to be separated, one is the abatement, the other is a change in our ordinances. So, uh, and if the change in the ordinance would also have, what, some description of what a non-traditional farm is?
Art, can I, I can talk to a non-traditional farm? Um, that is, uh, that's straight out of the state statute. Um, and when we contacted the state, we, we've, we've been going, talking with them multiple times in the past and recently. And the non-traditional part is, is they purposely vague because as Loretta said, things change. Um, however many years ago, when this stat- uh, statute was written, um, probably no one would have thought that people would be farming mushrooms on logs in the woodlot out behind their barn. Um, but that's agriculture. Uh, so agriculture strictly defined by statute, the non-traditional definition is purposely vague and was put into the statute by the state and for that reason. So I don't know, I, I, non-traditional farm, whatever someone was doing would still have to fit the definition of agriculture, as is defined by the state of Connecticut. Um, so non-traditional may just be the way they do it, uh, or I, it's vague for a reason, and that's why there really is no way to nail down the definition of that.
Jeff, you had your hand up next?
Yes, thank, thank you very much, Bill, and Art, thank you for reiterating that, I know at the last meeting you also gave a definition, of course, best you could, of non-traditional farm, uh, from the state. I've got just two items to mention, one dealing with the abatement directly, um, the language that's suggested. And, uh, it is under Article Three, Section D, um, in its discussion of the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, uh, making a, uh, a decision. I guess one of the issues that I do have here is what struck out of there after saying the definition of farming as detailed in Connecticut General Statute one dash one Q as amended from time to time. Uh, a number of items that in our district, in our town, I feel shouldn't be struck, should be considered by the Board of Finance and the Selectmen. Um, among those, I won't go through the whole list, but acreage of the property, number of types of livestock or fruit trees, quantities of milk or fruit sold, the gross income from the farm, all of these things that help give a full picture to the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen as to what the impact potentially could be for the town um, in its size, in its nature, in the the terms we can't use anymore in zoning when we talk about the rural characteristics, things like that. Um, so that's one area in the abatement language. The other is, when I go to another reference, which is the Plan of Conservation and Development, um, the objectives as written in the most recent one are D, explore the adoption of property tax abatement ordinances for farming operations other than dairy farms and orchards, so this is supportive of that when it comes to the plan of conservation and development. However, um, it also talks about the fact that, um, we do not, uh, Ashford currently does not identify the right-to-farm ordinance, um, which is subject to balancing the protection of residential property rights also in the long run, and that again leads to the, um, uh, the ability of the Selectmen and the Board of Finance to make, uh, a decision based on a full picture of items. And the other item in the objectives is H, investigate the feasibility of establishing value-added agriculture production facility in an industrial zone location. Indicate, I guess, the opposite side to that, not in a residential agricultural location. If something were to become of substantial side or size or of a, uh, industrial nature. So those are just two supportive, uh, documents, or looking at the current document that's submitted as well as what we currently have in the planning and zoning, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jeff. Steve, you had your hand up?
Yeah, um, the other, the other point of concern is that, um, I think, and it's been stated in, um, in it, at least one meeting that I've, uh, attended, I think it was at the, uh, Agricultural Commission meeting, that the, uh, second proposal is open-ended, there's no limit on the number, on the dollars, or, um, or, uh, which, you know, it, you know, it, let's just say somebody put up, uh, something that was a hundred thousand dollars, well, that, that's one thing. But if somebody put up something that was worth three million dollars, or five million dollars, or ten million dollars, there's nothing that would restrict that, um, uh, abatement, um, proposed abatement, there's nothing in the language that would restrict that, and, and that should be a concern for the town because, um, uh, there are lots of things that can be done. Um, it seems, uh, under the name of agriculture, and there are lots of tax abatements, et cetera, associated with agriculture. Um, any open-ended, um, uh, proposal is a cause for concern.
I can speak to that.
I can speak to that if I could.
Art, go ahead.
It's capped at 200,000. It's up to 200,000. The language is in there. It's not an unlimited amount. The equipment abatement is $100,000 now. And the state statute calls for an allowance by ordinance, an additional 100,000. So that would be the cap. It would not be $100 million. Someone has $101,000 worth of equipment, they're paying taxes on $1,000 now if they're getting the abatement for the first 100. And as I said before, a tractor now could be $100,000. And hay and equipment could be another $100,000. And if you're Danny Zychek and you're getting ready to retire, do you want to spend $200,000 on all new hay equipment? Or do you want to subdivide a very prime piece of property? So that's, but way I see it from where I sit. So, so, and also the, the, the the other one, the other Article Three is a property tax abatement. It's not, again, that's not, that's the property taxes, limited by the property taxes. It's not open-ended.
Jesus, what are you talking about?
Thank you. Anybody else have any other comments or questions?
Bill, Paul Varga, can I just correct a couple of things? First of all, I also take it, currently take advantage of the building, the ag building exemption. I do the paperwork every year. Secondly, Art mentioned that the equipment abatement would be from 100,000 to 200,000. So basically anything over 200,000 would still be taxed at the normal mill rate. And although that, the agenda doesn't mention it, and I don't know about the ag commission's proposal, but that property tax abatement is limited to 50%. The Board of Selectmen probably recalls approving those on dairy farms and orchards. So to answer Steve's question, if somebody built a $10 million facility, the town would still collect money, tax money on $5 million. That's part of the state statute. So that's not open-ended. It's very restrictive and there are limitations on who can apply for that. You can't just say you're a farm, doesn't matter what you do. The state has restrictions financially on how much you have to, how much income or expenses you have to have on the farm. And again, I'm very well versed in it because I file it every year. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Bill? Bill?
Who's, who's this? Hello?
Bill, it's Claudia Urson.
Hi, Claudia.
Hi, I'm in a butter. I'm in a butter to the property of Luther. And may I make a statement, please?
Well, you know, the only thing I'd say, Claudia, is, and I think the points were well taken earlier, that these are, these discussions are about the proposed changes in an ordinance and, and dollar amounts and that sort of thing. And I, I, I believe we're not served well by bringing this to a personal basis. I'm open if you want to correct me on that, but I, 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 I think addressing a personal developer or something is, is probably not appropriate for this point of the, the meeting.
Bill, we wanted to speak to the abatement.
If you speak to the abatement of the proposal, that, that's another story. But when we get into mentioning an individual or an individual proposal, I, I agree with a couple of other comments we heard earlier. I don't think it's appropriate, but if you want to speak to that abatement, go right ahead.
Okay, and I'm putting my son-in-law, Chris Coyle, on.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chris.
Just so we're clear, is it correct that the record Board of Selectmen have and Ashford residents have, are the minutes available on your website for the Agricultural Committee meetings of the last year? Is that correct?
My understanding is that's correct. Art, is that correct?
Due to COVID, we did not have an official meeting for quite some time. So there, there are some holes in the minute.
But the meetings that you did have, there were minutes filed with the town clerk?
When we had an official minute, official meeting, the minutes are there, yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Chris.
So, so everyone listening to this meeting tonight can understand that the body of work for the government of Ashford is contained on the website, on the link for the Agricultural Commission. If that's true, relative to this tax abatement question, everyone listening is calling, all residents of Ashford need to know several facts. Notwithstanding the individuals involved with those facts, these are facts relevant to any decision being asked of any representative government that stands small to be you. Those specifically, with regard to the record, there's nothing on the record of any analysis, contrary opinion, a financial forecast or anything of the like of where or why this abatement proposal came to be. What we do know is that two individuals that have been speaking tonight were apparently the sole authors of this proposal, including carefully designating which definitions that have served the town of Ashford for years are suggested no longer applicable. And what we know tonight is there's only one farm in the town of Ashford that would currently benefit. Ergo would raise the question, what new farms or new operations would benefit? That is solely focused on the question tonight from the Board of Selectmen. And if we know from written records that are available that a project in Mansfield under current law called Agbotic greenhouses is under litigation. And we know that people on the Agricultural Committee sent a letter in the name of the town of Ashford to Mansfield, supporting Agbotic project in its entirety as soon as possible. Those are quotes from the letter from the town of Ashford, representing you, Board of Selectmen. And if we know in written documentation that one of the individuals speaking tonight is promoting a product, project called Agbotic Paradise, I think it is well within the jurisdiction of this Board of Selectmen to ask who is promoting this abatement and why. You may approve the abatement. The voters of Ashford may think it's a wonderful thing. But to not ask for full transparency today's day and age with this on your own record. And I mind you, the thing that is on your record is the letter to Mansfield. What is not on your record is any objective analysis of how or whether this proposed abatement will help Ashford today or in the future. We have a lot more to follow on many other issues, but it's incomprehensible that anyone would vote on something without full disclosure of who's pushing it, what the analysis is. And if, oh, by the way, the alternative agriculture happens to be bigger than a Walmart store on a scenic road, the Board of Selectmen now knowing that that is alleged, either disprove its truth and approve this or seek more information from those that are now telling you it's just speculation when they were writing letters a year ago approving the same company, the same industry, the same project in other town. Thank you for the time.
Bill, can I ask a question?
Catherine.
Art, you mentioned that you had, when it comes to the minutes and that you hadn't had very many official meetings. Are you saying that there were some unofficial meetings where this was discussed?
The, the tax abatements?
And the ordinance change?
Yes.
There were unofficial meetings?
Yes.
Without quorums, I assume?
We didn't have enough people to vote on anything. We just, we're just talking about it. It was, if we made a mistake there, we did, but we, in COVID, two of my, three of my members dropped because they wouldn't have virtual meetings. So we did discuss it on, in meetings, unofficial, no votes were taken. We just, it was just discussion. And no minutes were filed because it was only two or three people.
Was it recorded?
What, was, were the meetings recorded?
Like a Zoom, a Zoom meeting recorded?
They were Zoom meetings, but they were not recorded.
Okay, so we're into government and the sunshine and so, you know, it would be best to, you know, do things in that manner. Thank you for the answer to my question.
In our defense, it's a whole new world and, and many of my people are not, members of the commission are not computer savvy and, and we're learning on the foot right now.
Yeah, I think that you may have gotten a little lost along the way too because you were making changes in the makeup of the board in terms of who's on the board, when in fact, the Board of Selectmen are the ones that do that. So you kind of, kind of meandered a bit there.
We thought we were doing the right thing. We got our wording wrong and, and every, the Agriculture Commission, I, I have to say, is just an advisory commission. We don't-
They report to the Board of Selectmen.
Right, we don't write regulations. We ask for regulations to be changed. We work with other commissions. We, we, we don't carry a big stick. We don't carry a stick at all, actually. We just educate, do our best to educate and advise.
I don't recall getting a copy of the letter that was sent in support of the, of the project in the other town.
That was so long ago. I, I, I don't even know if I have it on my computer. I, I'd have to look.
I don't, I don't believe the Selectmen received that letter.
Okay, um, I don't, I, I'd have to ask Mike Sabega's in Costa Rica. And my only other-
Let's all go down there and visit Mike and get that letter then.
Yeah, so I don't, I, I, I literally, I'm down to three members of the commission and two alternates that I can't seat for, for vacant seats. And, and we're, we're struggling, to be honest with you, the commission is, trying to get our, we're further down the agenda and I hope we can get a little straightened out there too. So, so we're just doing our best. And everything on the tax abatement and all the ordinances is all strictly defined by state statute. This isn't something we came up with and made up. This is directly from state statute. How it's all supposed to take place, the town votes, puts a new ordinance in place. It's, it's, it's state statute defines everything that we're doing here.
Thanks, Art. Janet, you had your hand up?
I just wanted to point out that in the minutes of the January 18th Board of Selectmen minute meeting, there's 35 pages. And one of them is the letter that the Agriculture Commission sent to Mansfield, supporting the project.
Thanks, Janet.
And also, I, I, I wanted, I, I'm a member of the Conservation Commission. I agree with Loretta's statement. On my own, I'd like to say regarding what Jeff said about Article Three, Section D, the strikeouts that gave some criteria, I think maybe they need to be updated, but I think there should be more criteria in there than just the definition of farming, especially since there's no real definition for non-traditional farming. I, I understand Art's point to that, but I'm always a little uncomfortable when we put something in regulations that isn't, isn't defined.
Can I just, can I just touch on the non-traditional farming thing?
Can I just?
One last time?
Hold on one second. Is there anybody that has not talked that would like to talk? We've got several parties here that are dominating it. Is there anybody that has any comments that I have not called on to talk?
Yes. Christine Efebo?
Go ahead, Christine.
Yeah, I, I think in listening to this, the issue that really bothers me is the ambiguous and undefined nature of non-traditional. I'm wondering how many people, the abatement effects that fit into that category? Are there any in town currently?
There's none that I know of.
Okay, so, so I'm not sure why we need to make that change. Second of all, it seems to me that instead of abatements, if there were to be a really huge industrial farm, we would want to increase their taxes and not abate them. Because they're, they would be using resources of the town that are not unlimited and that would potentially degrade the, the town's soil and water and other resources. So, you know, I, I, I'm not sure abatement is what we want to do all the time. That's it.
Thank you, Christine. Steve, I think you had your hand up?
Yes, I did. Yeah, I just wanted to point out that I wanted to thank first Paul for clarifying, yes, it's the 50% property tax that I was, I was referring to, not the added $100,000. Second, I'd like to point out that this is optional for the Board of Selectmen to prove, approve or disapprove. You know, it seems to me it requires further study and some clarification. And, and that may be the easiest route at, at the moment. That's all.
Thank you. Art, you had your hand up next, I believe?
I just want to say, if, if everybody's getting stuck on non-traditional, it's in the state statute, it could just as easily be removed. And it's strict, taken out and it left the rest of the wording stand. I mean, that's, if it's so hard to define and the state can't even define it, then how are we? So maybe, maybe we strike that one part just to keep moving forward.
Well, is there anybody that I missed that, that liked to speak? All right, one of the things I just, and, and I, I'm, I'll take this as a personal statement on my part and obviously Roger and Catherine can, can jump in, but I have no intention of taking any action on this request tonight. I think that we, we owe it to the entire town for the Board of Selectmen to do our due diligence. The discussions we've had during our last two meetings, I think, are part of that due diligence. I, for one, will probably be making a recommendation to my board that we compile a list perhaps for our next meeting of some questions that we may have and refer those to our different associated commissions, the planning and zoning, the conservation, any other commission, the Agriculture Commission for, for comment and recommendations to us. I, I'm in, in no position, as far as I'm concerned, of being comfortable to either pass anything or make a firm recommendation at this point. I think this was a very civil discussion. I know I've got educated on a number of different issues that we're talking about. I think there's clear that we need to clarify a few issues and fine tune perhaps the recommendation that the Agricultural Commission is making. But that's just my thought. Anyone else have any other? Jeff?
Yeah, just, Bill, I think it's a great idea to get input from any other affected commissions or commissions that have dog in the fight, so to speak. But I also think once you've got that input, it might be a good thing, and I'm not telling you your job, but it might be a good idea to run across the legal counsel also.
Well, I, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly and that's one of our, obviously our resources. And I would certainly think that, that one of the final stages would be bringing it to a formal public hearing with comments. Once we get it back from the, the individual other committees and commissions to get input before we consider, and I would think that we would bring it to a town meeting ultimately. And of course, ordinance is going to call for that anyway. Or change in an ordinance. Any other comments or thoughts?
I'd just like to say that I really want to thank the Board of Selectmen for listening and hearing. There is a lot of different viewpoints on this and to really take the time to look at it and, and ask the other commissions and people who've been working on this to give their input and then discuss it and be reasonable and rational about it and listen to each other. I think that's a credit to the Board of Selectmen and it's also, I think, a credit to our town. So I, I'm, I'm pleased that we, we discuss things because these are not easy solutions to come up to with. Thank you.
Thanks, Loretta. Other comments?
Bill? Bill?
Yes?
Hi, it's Claudia again. May we ask one more question?
Sure.
Hi, this is Chris Coyle again for Claudia Uerson. Uh, the question would be, will the letter that Claudia submitted, uh, the first letter uh, and for that matter, the second, be included in the legal review? And just to be clear and very transparent, in those letters, based on the facts available on the website and other facts available to us, we believe this town needs to review its ethics ordinances and determine whether those serving on commissions fully and completely disclose their potential business interests in the outcomes of proposals they recommend and either exonerate them and the facts presented while true don't amount to an ethics violation of town's opinion, which it's entitled to. Or conversely, that given the facts, they do arise to the level of an ethics violation. But to pretend that the facts do not present those issues is not fair. It's not truthful. The issues are there. Agbotics is being promoted. There's time and people working on it. The company called Eversource, you've probably heard of it, told Claudia that they've been talking to Luther for a long time about this project, quote unquote. As have others we've started to talk to. So we would hope that the letters submitted and the facts provided in those letters that are all from your records, nothing is made up or invented, are part of your legal review because no one will trust any government if the special interests or specific business interests, however valid they may be, and there's a lot of creed of good work underway here. But it's just got to be fully transparent in light of day. So thank you on behalf of Claudia.
Our, our board tries to pride itself on transparency and I think they've done that from the beginning. I believe Claudia's first letter was a part of our January eighteenth uh Selectmen's meeting and her subsequent letter and Luther's subsequent letter will be part of this, this meeting's uh minutes and available to the public. And naturally, if we go to our council, which I'm going to assume eventually we will, um, they'll have access and, and knowledge of all of the public records that we have at that time. Any other comments or thoughts? Well, again, I'd like to thank everybody, uh, invite you to stay on to the other portions of our meeting if you'd like, but I'd like to thank everybody for their uh, their participation and I believe it was a civil discussion that we all needed to have. I think a lot of really legitimate questions have been brought forward and, and opportunities for all of us to get a better idea on where we need some clarification. So, thank you, folks. I'm going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is old business, discuss reopening strategies, town facilities, update relating to the building uh of uh board and commission meetings. Um, we have been holding off. Um, we have got the equipment that the town has purchased to do our pro owl meetings, which are uh leading to hybrid meetings. I know our board originally talked about the hopes of, of doing that sometime during the first week in January. And with the surge that we were under, it just did not seem reasonable. We will continue to look at that closely. Uh, our next item on the agenda is, is uh discussion of the COVID. Excuse me, it's not, it's the Ashford School Building. But we'll discuss this a little uh further under our uh COVID updates, but uh at this point, there's going to be no changes. Um, Catherine and, and Roger, you're, you're welcome to jump in, but we are pursuing cautiously. Um, and we'll continue to do that, that we feel that our actions have been in the best interest, both health-wise and, and, and I know. I, I know it's been somewhat of an inconvenience that people getting attuned to doing these Zoom meetings, but thank the Lord, we do have the ability to do that. But um, the Board of Selectmen is very conscious uh and we want to get back to normal as much as everybody does. But we want to do it in a safe manner and quite honestly, we're, we're going to do it prudently. Next item on the agenda is the Ashford School Building Committee uh Status Report. Jim, I assume you're going to uh take the reins on that?
Sure. So we, we have not met in some time. We are looking to have a meeting here in the very near future. Uh, there is some recommendation to take the solar project to the next step. Uh, as soon as the committee has an opportunity to meet, we'll come back to you with any recommendations we have at that point. Uh, I know that, you know, further down in your agenda, we'll be dealing with uh, or you'll be dealing with some um mo, your proposed motions uh so that we can get the application into the school and I can either talk to you about those now or we can talk about that when you get to the point of acting on those motions. That is your pleasure, sir.
Um, I don't mind you addressing those motions now. I think it's part of your report.
So the only, the only, and I, and I did try to reach out to the superintendent on Friday and was unable to reach him. Um, so the only thing he and I discussed that's different than what appears in the recommended motions is that my, my recommendation does not align with the recommendation to appoint the existing uh school advisory building committee as the building committee. I think it's too big. I think it has too many people. I think it should be smaller and able to make decisions quickly and move quickly. I think it should have appropriate representation uh, you know, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. And I think it should have appropriate representation on behalf of the school board. But I think it should be a much smaller committee because that committee will actually, if, w- once you appoint that committee, it will actually have charge of the roofing project and likely the solar project if you give them that charge as well.
Did you have a number in mind, Jim?
Uh, you know, I, I always like odd numbers because it's always easier to come to a vote. Uh, you know, you, you always, as long as you have every member present, you always get an answer whether you like it or not. Um, so I, 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 you know, I think three is too small. I think seven is too big. So I would settle on five, Bill.
Thanks, Jim. Roger, Catherine, do you have any questions to Jim at this point?
I think that that is very good advice and I would agree with that.
Yeah, I'm there too.
I agree.
And Jim, I very much appreciate the stewardship that you have had for this committee and this effort.
Thank you. I, I just wish I had more time to give it, you know, more, but um we're doing the best we can. Uh, and, you know, once we get past this piece where we get the roofing project approved and we're well on our way with the solar, we'll be able to take a little more time to work on some of the other items, you know, that, that are, you know, plans for the future, if you will. And I think that's where, that's where the larger committee really comes in because it's a diverse group of individuals who have a lot of different ideas. Uh, but it's going to take us a while to plow through all of that and be able to come back to the board with some really good recommendations. You know, we did have, we've had a couple of good meetings and we've prioritized, you know, what we think is the most important things for consideration with the capital committee and, and those are things that have consensus of everybody. So I think, I think we're in a good place at the moment and uh we've got some really good people who are very interested in carrying this ball forward. So it's great.
Thank you.
Jim, I'd like to echo Catherine's thoughts and appreciation of the work you put in. I think many of us, if we put in a, a fraction of the time you put in, the town would be even in better shape than we are right now. Your uh efforts over many years have been much and continue to be much appreciated.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, next item is the uh COVID update. Um, we've been watching the, the, the COVID situation and, and thank the Lord, the trend is downward. Um, the latest report that I got from the Connecticut Health Department was that the uh positive uh positivity rate is down to four point seven seven. It hasn't been in that rate probably for five or six weeks. Um, the hospitalizations on a statewide basis are just about in half. Uh, including that are, are Wyndham Hospital. Um, on a national basis, not as much as the state level, but on a national basis, we have been in this office monitoring those and uh every state in the union, with the exception of Alabama, is also showing a uh, a large downward surge. So um, let's all keep praying it goes that way.
So I would, Bill, I would like to point out that we had seventy-two cases in a two-week period that ended January twenty-eighth. The town of Ashford had seventy-two cases in two weeks.
Yeah. And I, I think part of that is, is the campaign and, and I know our school nurse has been a, a, a major help in that in, in uh encouraging and actually facilitating a, a, a strong testing program. Um, and their numbers even at the school are, remain in single digits where a month ago, they were averaging twenty, between twenty and twenty-three a day. So uh, but it is, and that, and that's why we're not taking immediate uh, uh, action on any, any action. We're staying status quo because it is serious and uh it's not something that we can just make an overnight decision on. We're looking at this under the long term.
My sentiments exactly.
Okay, uh, TRPCO, uh, Item D under seven is TRPCO House Review Committee. Um, I finally did have a conversation today with our architect, uh, Bob Hurd, um, who was very apologetic again for the circumstances not getting us to report. Um, he's made me a promise that we will have it in hand by this Friday or he's going to let me know that. And I said, if we don't have it in hand by Friday, I'm going to seriously recommend making some stronger recommendations of my Board of Selectmen to some other actions. I think we've been more than patient and, and uh as you know, the contract was originally written and we put a good faith deposit on that contract that we could have our report before December. And I was promised over the past three weeks that we'd have it before the end of January and it's yet to be delivered. So uh, I would say if we don't have it by this Friday, um, I'll be making some recommendations to our board for, for their action. Catherine, Roger, any comments along those lines?
No, thank you. This was a concern that we had, I had originally.
I think many of us did on past performance.
Yeah, it's been a long time coming.
Joan, any comments on behalf of the committee?
I'm not, I, can you hear me, Bill?
I hear you loud and clear.
Okay, uh, no, I just, I don't understand him being so behind. But, you know, whatever the board decides.
Okay. Unless there's any other comment. I know Catherine, you had brought up perhaps if we didn't receive that report considering uh, uh, calling a meeting of a committee. Um, I think that's probably a good idea, but why don't we wait till Friday and then figure out where we're going from there and figure out uh if we're going to convene a meeting or not.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Item E is just a procedural um for a, a formal uh motion based on the finding and, and the vote. Uh, I think it's a bit ambiguous, but I have no problem entertaining it to uh verify that the Board of Selectmen approves the purchase of the two thousand twenty-one Ford F-five-fifty uh dump truck. Can I have a motion to that?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Catherine? You're muted. Can you hear me? Thumbs up or down?
Sorry, sorry, I was muted. Sorry, sorry.
No problem.
Uh, I'll make the motion, uh, but I want a discussion.
Okay, you, uh, Roger made the motion, so.
Oh, I'll second it. Thank you.
Second it. Floor's open for discussion.
Okay, um, I thought we took care of this on, uh, with our uh, uh, special meeting where we actually approved it from our end and uh sent it off to the board uh, uh, notified the Board of Finance.
Chris, you? I'm, I'm sorry, excuse me, Catherine, go ahead.
So I didn't think we, I don't think we need to do another one.
Chris, did you have a comment on it? You're muted.
What? I'm sorry?
Did you have a comment? Uh, Catherine is questioning whether or not we need uh Item D because we've already moved on a recommendation to purchase the truck.
We did that in the special meeting that we held for that very purpose. That was on Friday, the twenty
eighth, was it?
Was it twenty-eighth? So we had the special meeting and.
We made the recommendation for the next Board of Finance meeting.
Yeah.
We had a special meeting set a date in the meeting.
I thought, Chris, we, we had a special meeting at the Board of Selectmen. It was just Catherine, I believe. Roger was uh had another commitment. And then we endorsed making a recommendation to the Board of, am I confusing meetings? And then we made a recommendation of the Board of Finance to authorize the calling of the town meeting.
So let me think about this for a second. Am I confused?
We made, we made a motion to recommend to the Board of Finance, consideration of the purchase of that. I don't have the date in front of me. Then, once the Board of Finance authorized the Board of Selectmen to call a town meeting, Catherine, you and I met and we set a date.
Right.
That correct, Chris?
For tonight.
No, that was.
Oh.
Yes, yes, it was for tonight.
For the public meeting we just had.
Yeah, um.
I don't see any harm in proceeding with the motion that's on the floor.
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much. New business, street lighting. Um, I sent the nasty gram off to uh Jonathan who, with the Eversource about our two, our two infamous street lights that we're waiting for, for months. And um, he is out of town. He's due back tomorrow, so stay tuned. In the meantime, we still don't have those lights up, but.
Um, I think the problem with that is that the requisition process that Eversource has doesn't fit what we're talking about. Um, the requisition process is for someone to have a light put on their prop, you know, that their property, that kind of thing. And also intimates who pays for it. So I think that's what part of the problem is, is that their requisition process doesn't really uh align with the town saying, we want a light here.
Well, I think we're, as, I mean, you requested on a number of occasions. I've requested on, I think we, they, they at least owe us the courtesy of a written response of what the hangup is and I haven't seen anything yet.
Yeah, in the past Jonathan had provided me with, you know, what the um request process was, which is what we were trying to follow. Okay, okay, thank you.
We'll stay on it. Uh, Item B under eight is Ashford School Construction Grant Application. Resolutions required to be provided by the legislative body, which in this case is the Board of Selectmen. Chris, do you want to read those resolutions, please?
Okay.
You want to read the two resolutions that we are asked to consider?
Right. First one is resolved resolved that the Board of Selectmen authorizes the Town Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the proposed project at the Ashford School. That's the first resolution.
Do I have a motion?
Harrison, so moved, hardly moved.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Discussion. All in favor, hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much, unanimous. Second resolution, Chris?
Second resolution. Second resolution. Resolve that the Ashford School Building Committee is hereby established as the building committee with regard. To the proposed project at the Ashford School.
Well, I think, well.
I didn't quite get that.
I, 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 I believe the gist of it, your mic is breaking up a little, Chris. But I think the gist of it is to appoint the existing study committee as the formal building committee. And I think that Jim was making recommendation that that not necessarily be the, the case here. I don't have a list in front of me of the existing members of the, uh, the committee as it sits right now. How many are on the committee now, Jim?
Well, Sherry, would you like me to give you the list?
Hi, Sherry, thank you.
Hi.
Yes.
Okay, give me one quick second here. Okay. Okay, um, what you've got right now, you have John Calorice, Ronald Stanley. Michael Melody, Michael Sabiga, John Talgo, Marion Matthews, and Jim Rupert. So that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven members.
So Bill, um, again. Jim's recommendation would, was that it'd be a smaller group with representation from, let's see, I think he said Board of Selectmen. I can't remember what the other ones were, I kind of zoomed in on that.
I think he said five.
Yeah, five total.
And, uh, but I think you were looking at representation being a little bit different than it has been.
I, I apparently not writing fast enough, I got four of the seven. I've got Jim, uh, Marion, John.
You want me to go over them again?
Would you?
Yeah, sure, absolutely, John Calorice.
Yeah.
Ronald Stanley.
Okay.
Michael Melody.
Okay.
Michael Sabiga.
Yeah.
John Talgo.
You have John Caloris.
Yep, yeah, he's first one.
Stanley.
Yep.
Mike Melody, Mike Sabiga.
John Talgo. Marion Matthews.
And Jim.
And yeah, yep.
Well.
And I'd like, um, Bill, I'd like to, I'd like to refresh our memory. In terms of what Jim Rupert was saying that he recommended for the makeup of that.
I, I don't recall him, I, I'll let Jim speak for himself, I don't remember him talking about the makeup. I, I thought, Jimmy, you talked more about the numbers, but do you have an idea for the makeup?
So, so, so I certainly, you know, I think, you know, either three or five, and it sounds like you guys all agree that, you know, five is probably. A good number, uh, you know. I would recommend that the superintendent be on the committee, he has been, you know, quite helpful and engaged in this process. Uh, uh, unlike our former superintendent, so I, I, you know, he, he's put a lot of effort in here. And I think he brings some good things to the table, so I would certainly recommend that he become a member of this. Um, you know, you've got some great people from the committee to choose from. But the other piece is, uh, you know, I don't know if you'd wanna have somebody from the Board of Selectmen on the committee as well. Um, you know, I just, I think it helps bring a level of transparency. And, you know, i- i- it helps keep the lines of communication open. Uh, both with the Board of, Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen. And I certainly think, you know, Mike Melody is gonna be important to this process. Um, assuming that he, you know, he stays in, employed with us for, you know, the foreseeable future, he'll be there, you know, during the duration of this project. So I think he brings some perspective as well. Uh, and, and I certainly would start there and, you know, make some decisions, you know, for who you think is most appropriate. To fill out those roles, and again, I, I would like to see people on this committee who are able to make. Decisions, uh, you know. Pretty rapidly so that when the project is underway, we can just move the project along.
Can, can I make a suggestion?
It's your meeting, you can make all the suggestions.
I, I know that. I was more seeing if anybody had an objection to that, but, um, and we don't have a motion on the floor, but. I'm thinking of the infamous Jim Rupert on it. John Caloris, he's got a lot of experience with construction, and I know he's been involved in several building committees, Mike Melody. John Tagle, Talgo, who's an architect, and Craig Kreller.
I, I will say that John has not, John has not participated in our last couple of meetings. I'm not sure, no, uh, uh, John Talgo. I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, if he's lost interest or something. Uh, else has happened, or if they just happen to be on nights when he's not available. Um, but, but the last two meetings we have, I, I haven't heard from him and he hasn't participated.
Okay. Catherine, are you interested in serving on that committee?
Uh, sure. I was, what I was gonna say is, when you think of someone from the Board of Selectmen on that committee, you're really looking for that person to be. A partial conduit. Um, but also.
Facilitator, yep.
What, when you think about the decision-making that that committee has to make, give me a, a good example. You, you say quick decision-making, a lot of decisions, you know, when we talk about a Board of Selectmen is, we do them jointly. So I'm trying to think of what would be outside of that.
Well, you know, it might be, you know, the choices of, of insulation we have are from X, Y, Z contractor. And it, you know, it carries a, an R rating of, you know, seven per inch, and this one has, you know, an R rating of. Eight per inch, but, you know, it's gonna take three months longer to get it. You know, I think those are the kinds of decisions that we're gonna be faced with as, as this project moves forward, um. And we'll, you know, we'll be making, you, you know, the committee will make recommendations, you know, after it collects and solicits bids, as to, you know, who the. Board of Selectmen should engage in a contract with, those kinds of things. And I, and I think that'll, it does two things, first of all, it helps the project move forward. Uh, quickly with, you know, decisions that are made, you know, in a timely fashion. Without getting into, you know. One of the things that happens with the current makeup of the building committee is we end off go, end up going off in discussions on. You know, multiple different levels or multiple different tangents for projects that we're perceiving in the future. And the focus of this building committee would just be those projects that are awarded and that are actually happening. And so I think that it just makes a lot more sense to have a slightly different makeup. So that it can just be focused on those things. And not be worried about the mini splits or, you know, the sprinkler system down the road or. You know, what do we do for, you know, handicap accessibility? You know, tho- those are the conversations for the advisory school building committee.
So what you're, if I understand you correctly, what you're really saying is you're looking for somebody, say, from the select, Board of Selectmen. To help keep the guardrails up on, uh, on. Where the discussions are going and how the decisions are getting moved along, is that correct?
I, I, yeah, and, and to, you know, be the conduit for information, you know, potentially between. The Board of Selectmen and the, the committee. And you're, you know, you're gonna, whoever on the Board of Selectmen is present is gonna have the ability to say, you know, maybe this is a decision we need to bring back to the board. You know, maybe this isn't a decision for the committee. You know, I, and I think, you know, just having that ability is very helpful.
One, one of my concerns is by, by statute, of course, the first selectman is executive of all boards and committees. And, and while I think Catherine would certainly be a valuable resource for that committee. I wonder if it compromises her from being able to vote on something if it does come back to the Board of Selectmen. Uh, being a part of.
I have, I have to, I have to agree, um. I'm just trying to figure out how to solve that problem, that's all. Uh, solve the problem of keeping them, you know, keeping the focus in the right place. Um, it sounds like it's a little hard to herd, herd the cats there.
Well, I think, you know, I think the group that, you know, Bill started with is a group of individuals who are capable of staying focused on the task at hand. You, you know, and, and I think at the end of the day, I want the Board of Selectmen to be comfortable with the people who are, that, um, that's part of the committee.
Well, why, why don't we do this, just because I know John Talgo is, is an architect and he's been intimately involved in other building. Why don't we consider having him the fifth person? If it doesn't work out, then we'll look to alternatives.
I, I'm okay with that.
Sounds good.
So can I have a motion to appoint Jim Rupert, John Caloris, Mike Melody, Craig Kreller? And John Talgo as the formal, to fall in line with the resolution that Chris read. And perhaps, Chris, you wanna read that again?
That would be good.
Are you hearing me, Chris?
I think she's looking it up.
Hello, Chris.
Are you waiting for me?
Yes.
Just to read the resolution again.
Would you, would you read the second resolution, did, did you hear the names that have been, um, that have been recommended?
John Caloris. Ron Stanley.
No.
Mike Melody.
No.
John Talgo, Marion Matthews, and Jim Rupert.
Okay, those are the existing men, uh, members. Catherine, do you want me to get, do you know the names that we just talked about?
Let me just see if I've got them right, what we're talking about is, um, for the, what are we calling this group?
It's the second res. Building Committee.
Building Committee, okay, so this is the one that would be, in a sense. Uh, I wanna use the word overseeing what's going on with the building or making recommendations.
I think that's proper.
Okay, so, um, the people that were named were Craig Kreller. Because he's the superintendent, that's a good one for him. Mike Melody. John Caloris. Jim Rupert.
And John Talgo.
Except that he hasn't been attending the meetings.
Well, well, we'll appoint him and, and, and see if it's just, I mean, it could be another reason, he has been a participant in the past.
Okay, so Chris, that second resolution, could you read that? Um, forget the names, we've got the names, we can just add them in, but could you read that resolution again about that, uh, committee?
The second resolution, Chris.
Do you want them all again?
No, we don't need, just the second resolution without the names.
Just the wording.
Resolve that, resolve that the Ashford School Building Committee is hereby established as the building committee. With regard to the proposed project at the Ashford School.
Perfect, and.
Consisting of the members.
Yeah, and then we'll have the consisting of the five individuals that we've named, so did you get those, those names, Chris?
Yep.
Okay. It sounds like a very good committee.
Absolutely, Roger, is there a second?
Seconded.
Any more discussion? Are you straight on the motion, Chris?
At the third resolution. The result.
Wait, wait, one second, we, we got, we got a vote on, on the second. All in favor of the resolution, uh, made by Catherine regarding the, uh, school building committee. Signify by saying aye, aye. Okay, thank you, okay, third resolution, I thought we only had two.
Resolve that the Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes at least the preparation. Of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the proposed project at the Ashford School.
Okay, I can comment on that, but why don't we get a motion on the floor, can I have a motion?
I, I couldn't hear what was read.
Hear it either.
Huh.
No offense.
So it, she was, it was breaking up, so.
I have it up, I can read it for you.
Alright.
Perfect.
Resolve that the legislative body, which is the Ashford Board of Selectmen, hereby authorizes. The, at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the roof project at the Ashford School.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, there's a motion on the floor, I am told that those plans have already been paid for and authorized. By the Board of, uh, Finance and actually have been drawn, is that right, Jim?
Uh, I know that Mike was working on them. And that the cost of that was gonna be around twelve thousand five hundred dollars. But that, that seventy percent of that, roughly seventy percent of that is reimbursable, uh, on the, upon the approval of, of the project. And so those funds, once they're approved, would come back to the town, uh, to go into the general fund.
That's, and, and I believe Craig told me that that was already approved by the Board of Finance, that funding, are you familiar with that, Judy or?
I, I know that we had recommended some things, um, last year, I, there may have been more that was done. Since then, since, you know, since we met initially, um, so, so that may actually be the case, but I don't know for sure. One way or the other, that's something that Chris and I were gonna try to communicate about this week to see what the standing of everything that was approved was. Because there's also seems to be some confusion about what was and wasn't approved for the, for the planning of the solar project. So I, I'm truthfully not a hundred percent sure, but I, I think Cheryl should probably know that answer.
I, I asked the same question of Craig. When we were talking about resolutions and Craig told me the plans have already been drawn and the money hasn't in place and been spent, so.
So I guess I don't understand this resolution, if that's.
It is just a formality that he told me he needed in order to complete the application to the State Board of Ed.
These, yeah, these, these resolutions are, of course, now you feel like you're talking to the cat, right? These resolutions are specifically required by the State Board of Education for project consideration.
I see, as I recall, um, it was, those monies for this work was approved before. Uh, I'm trying to remember if it was done, it wasn't, was it done as part of capital improvement? Or was it done, uh, just by the Board of Finance?
I know we had made a recommendation initially, I think for like ten thousand dollars for the roofing project. To come out of the school's unextended fund, uh, which, which went before the Board of Finance. And was approved, I don't know if the additional monies for, uh, the preparation of the schematic drawings. Was recommended and went back, but I know Judy had her hand up, she might know the answer.
Well, I was asking. Well, I was asking, I was going to ask about the timeframe. When did this happen? Do we think, like, was it in the spring?
I'm, uh, I'd be guessing, Judy. I'm, I'm not sure.
I'm trying to look it up, but.
If it, if it was approved by the Board of Finance, oh, that's just a matter of looking at the minutes from your meetings.
Exactly. I'm trying to find the timeframe, Catherine.
Well, I would say that in all likelihood, it was at the point in time we were, when discussions were going on about what the capital improvement plan would be. Because we went back and forth about making sure that we were making, that monies were being apportioned for the preliminary work related to the solar.
That, that's what we made, if you remember, Catherine, that's when we made the initial recommendations. And that was through the ca- through, that was through the Capitol Committee. Uh, and then that went, that went to the Board of Finance after the Capitol Committee uh, for approval, and that was for the initial project funds for the roof, which didn't, which I don't believe included the schematic design. I think the schematic design is an additional contract uh, with the architect. And we also recommended, I think, the first two pieces of the, of the solar at that point.
So Judy, I would look at minutes around January, February of last year. January, February, March.
Okay, thank you.
And as far as the schematic, uh, I don't recall the schematic. I don't remember that term in the course of any discussions.
Yeah, that's, that's the next step. And I think all we approved on the roof was the first step uh, for funding. So I think we're going to have to recommend an additional appropriation and, and probably the most likely place for it to come would be from that, uh, unexpended funds account.
Yes, if there's enough in there. So this, this, uh, number three motion here that we're looking at, is this moot because we don't have the information? We don't have what we need to work with to recommend this? Uh, uh, is what's being asked that the Board of Selectmen make a decision to recommend, to approve this so that it can go to the Board of Finance?
No, my understanding from Craig, and I specifically asked that, was that that, the plans have been done for the roof and that no further action was needed, that it was a fair of complete.
Well, it sounds to me like.
He needed, he needed this resolution in order to finalize and submit his application to the State Board.
I'm fine making the resolution. If that's what it is, I understand how that can work. Where if you've already got the work done and he, he has to, he has to have that attestationment that goes to the state. So that we can.
That's what he, that's what he told me. My, my suggestion would be, in the spirit of good faith, we go ahead and, and, and consider approving that. And then we can always ask if, if, if we're wrong on that, we can withdraw that.
I thi- I think that's a great idea. I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Roger, you're muted. Roger.
Roger, are you there?
I will certainly second that.
All right, we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded, all in favor.
Yeah. I was, I found the minutes if you want me to read that for you.
Go ahead.
Uh, I, Judy, did you find it? I don't want to step on you. I just, um.
Well, go ahead. I found the ones from February for the solar.
Right, February 20, oh gosh, I gotta go all the way back to the top, 25th, 2021. I can read what the Board approved. Um, the motion to approve the request by the Ashford Board of Ed to expend $17,500 from BOE non-lapsing fund. This expenditure consists of solar, vortae, planning, procurement, and implementation at an estimated cost of $12,500 and solar ready, solar ready roof planning at an estimated cost of $5,000. The motion was passed unanimously. Um, that's the only thing I found so far.
That sounds like it fits.
I think it does. Thanks, Paul.
That fits with my memory too.
Very good. Okay, we'll go to a vote. All in favor of the motion on the floor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks. Okay, American Rescue Plan, I think we've already discussed that and, um, we are, we will get a list out, Catherine, I think it's a good suggestion. Um, and try to update our survey as best we can. Um, I've, we continue to ask for them, but I haven't seen anything come in in the past two weeks at all. Other things that, that we've been discussing. Okay, item D, Boards, Commissions, Committee Appointments. Agricultural Commission Discussing Possible Action Re- Appointments to Fill Two Regular Member Vacancies to Serve to March 15th of '24.
Do we have names?
Are there any names that are being recommended by the commission? Artis, you still on with us?
I'm still here. I have several names, but I believe, uh, Luther wanted to speak. Go ahead, Luther.
Hi, folks. Um, I'm just throwing a wrench in Arts Works, uh, for the evening. Um, I wanted to note, uh, I was one of those names. It saddens me greatly to notify you that I will be delivering my formal resignation from the Ag Commission, uh, tomorrow. Um, so I will no longer be in consideration for any, uh, Ag Commission appointments. Um, I think it's unfortunate, but it, it appears that Claudia and her family have made it fairly clear that they're going to continue to portray my involvement uh, in the Ag Commission is corrupt. So I would rather preserve the integrity of the Ag Commission and resign so that that can't be called into question in the future. And, um, so that's the action I'm going to take. So you won't be able to take any action on the recommendation of my appointment tonight. And, uh, that's it.
Art?
Art? Did you have any other names there?
I, I would request that all of the membership on the Ag Commission is going to expire on March 15th of this year. Um, now with Luther resigning, um, I'm really struggling to figure out what to do next. I would ask the Board of Selectmen to let me, to give me a month to the first meeting in March. I'll have a February meeting on the 17th. I will, we will make the proper motions, and I have to say, um, Sherry Mooch and Cheryl Baker at the Town Hall have been so incredibly helpful as we navigate this new world. Um, so I just wanted to make that known. Um, so we, uh, so I would, I would like to have, uh, Ag Commission February meeting to get everything clarified so I can present to you something, um, in the form that it should be. Uh, so, uh, I make that request that we, we table this till next month.
Without, without objection, we'll carry that till our next, our first meeting in, uh, March.
Thank you.
And, um, and Luther, I would like to thank you for the service that you have provided. You, um, you're a great addition to any board. Um, you're very knowledgeable and organized, and you're forward thinking. And, uh, we need more people like that.
I'll echo that, Luther, and, uh, we do appreciate your service and we hope you'll stay active.
Um, I, I appreciate that.
Inland Wetland and Water Coils, uh, fill an alternate vacancy created by the resignation of Ken, uh, Green. Are there any nominations? Hearing none, we'll move on. Recreation Committee, go ahead. Did I hear somebody? No? All right, uh, Recreation Committee to fill one alternate seat. Term to expire April 1st of '22. Hearing none, we'll move on. Commission on Aging. Fill vacancy created by the resignation of Elaine uh, Wellness Pandolfo. Term associated with Miss Pandolfo's seat expires June 30th of '23. Um, I have an interested party, but, uh, I have not got her authorization of proceed yet. Uh, are there any other nominations for that seat on the commission? We'll could, carry it till our next meeting then. Um, tax refunds.
Yep. Um, also, also in Medicaid General Statute, that's one, they die. Uh, Timothy and Kimberly Warke with an amount of $270 and 22 cents. Lisa Strugoff in the amount of $41.5 cents. Lisa Strugoff again, an amount of $353.21. Lisa Admark Strugoff in the amount of $35.17.
And these were all, uh, recommended and brought forward by our tax collector?
They're all 12 F129. They're all over.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? You're muted, Catherine, if you.
I know. I can't get there fast enough. That's, I'm a second and yeah, aye.
We have a motion of all in favor, signified by saying aye.
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 Aye, unanimous. Thank you. Um, we don't have it on the, um, agenda, but, um, comments for the good of the board. I, I'd just like to make a comment. I, I'd like to thank everybody that's participated and, and hung in there with us. I know it's been a long meeting. But I think it's an excellent example of transparency and open dialogue done in a civil way. Um, I appreciate everybody's participation. Uh, some of the conversations obviously weren't easy. But I, I think we're moving in the right direction and we're all becoming, uh, more knowledgeable of a number of things that we have to consider on a number of different fronts. So I thank you very much and, uh, I will intertation, entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Roger, seconded by Catherine. All in favor, signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye, and good night.
Good night, folks. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.